Call meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Sheriff Morton, would you like to start us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to liberty for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this March meeting of county council in order. I'd like to just take a minute and thank the emergency response and the highway department and everybody's been working through this storm to roll through all the additional hours and efforts that we've been in. And I'd also like to point out having this building available as an emergency, you know, place to meet and different things is a big asset to our community. I'd also like to welcome Patty Capus to council. She was here Monday night at her meeting, but there was nothing going on and failed to mention that. So Patty represents district two, so welcome.
Thank you.
County attorney hopefully will be here soon. We'll go ahead and get started on the agenda, the approval of the minutes from our February 12 meeting. If I have a chance to look at those.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Kim. Second by Tom. Any questions? All those in favor? Garrett, would you like to sit up here? Welcome our county attorney Garrett Vasco. Also our state representative for district sixty-eight. General assembly in session and who's been very busy. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm gonna shuffle the schedule around just a little bit, just for time purposes. Under old business, we have Dusty Hunt from the highway department for appropriation.
So what I got, we had one of our trucks involved in an auto accident, so they gave us money to fix that truck. They come in as refund and fund eleven seventy-six, line thirty-eight hundred. And I just need to move that, it was fifty-six hundred and eighteen dollars, fifty-five cents. I need to move that to the same fund eleven seventy-six, line item sixty-three sixty-three for repair and equipment, so that we can use that to fix that truck.
It's been advertised fifteen weeks.
What was the amount, five hundred?
Five thousand six hundred and eighteen fifty-five. Yeah, basically just from the refunds up into repair equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation of five thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents in the highway fund to.
I'll second.
Motion by Matt, second by Kim for the five thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents. Any questions? All those in favor?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
One second. I know that you guys used all your overtime before we appropriated again. You had storms since then, now we've had this storm. You guys, are you guys gonna be asking for more overtime?
I would say more than likely, yeah. I think we had thirty, I'd have to go back and look, but thirty-six hundred left out of that last fifteen thousand. I haven't looked at the overtime for last night's storm, but we had, basically did we run per tree that we had, so we didn't have everybody out, but we had a few out here. We're gonna be close.
That's just to cover what's, what's in there now.
Yeah, yep.
How much do you think you ought to appropriate to get us through the six parts?
I have no clue.
I mean, we're already, this will be second, third time you've come to us for appropriation on that.
And I have no clue, to be honest with you, because I mean, sometimes it's a mild summer, sometimes it's a crazy one, so.
The last appropriation too, he actually took that from the own highway monies. And I don't know if you'd be able to do that.
Yeah, I'd have to look, because I don't know either.
Get into your revenue again.
Yeah.
So you think you'll, you think that fund is short now?
No.
It's not short, no, but we gotta be careful to, yeah.
Another fifteen or.
Because I had leftover money in that fund from last year that I didn't use. But we also got to watch too, when we do community crossings, we got some going now, which we've already got our money set aside for, so we're gonna apply some for this year as well, so I gotta watch not to spend too much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to jump down to new business. We'll come back to the salary ordinance with, I think that'll be a lengthy discussion, so I'd like to go ahead and do the new business items. I would start with Kyle Weaver, annual report.
Thank you, Lance. So we just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about our annual report. We usually come in February this year, we were, our schedule didn't quite make it, so we're gonna be in March. Just probably to talk about some of the things we're doing in twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-four, did a lot of leadership programming for our community and our school kids. We're pretty active in our school system, we're very proud of being involved in our school system. We do a couple programs specifically for tenth graders and eighth graders where they really develop a leadership skill set. And we're talking about being able to determine what kind of leadership skill set you have today, how you can develop it to set in seats like you folks are setting in this evening. So developing new skill sets, communication, preparation, responsibility, all those things are very important to, excuse me, to all those folks that are trying to develop those leadership skill sets. We also involved in our four H camp, so we have a four H camp. We send anywhere from sixty to a hundred kids in four H camp every year. Again, it's about developing young leaders and good citizens and lifelong learners that we have from Switzerland County. So very proud of the efforts we have in, in Switzerland County. We're gonna highlight a few more, Haley's gonna talk about a few more things that she's also involved in.
Hi guys, my name's Haley Drummish. I am a new educator for the extension office. I'm specializing in forge development and human health sciences. I just started in October, so I've been doing a lot of training. There hasn't been too much I've been doing program wise. But there are a couple of things I've already done and plan to do throughout the year, starting with serve safe. So my background, I was a chef for seven years and now I'm here. So I've got registered in serve safe and will hopefully be able to start providing those courses to the community very soon. On top of that, we have our discovery and innovation lab down the hall right here, and I've been working to really get that up and going in the community. Next, on the twenty-sixth, so less than a week away now, we're gonna do our first STEM Spark program with our three D printers. We already have quite a few kids who are registered, so I'm super excited about that. But on top of that, we also have the elementary school doing some walking field trips. And they're gonna come over and experience some of the equipment, robots, things that we have in the lab that they don't have access to in the schools, so we're starting to get that going a little bit. And then last but not least, I've been doing an adulting one-on-one course. Traditionally, that's done with our junior leaders in our four H program. Now I've started to do it with, I've just taught all of the seventh grade this adulting one-on-one. It's like life skills, basic skills, those sorts of things. And I've expanded on it a little bit, so it really encompasses everything that comes with adulting. And we actually just talked to the JAG representative at the high school, Mary Case, and we're going to start teaching at the entire high school as well. So hopefully we can get that out there.
So just kind of a snapshot of what we do in the extension office, and obviously we don't have time, we don't take all your time out this evening, but that's kind of just a few snapshots of what we do. Somebody have any questions for Haley or us?
Is this report available to the public?
Absolutely, yes.
Where do they go to get it?
The Purdue one is on, if you go to Purdue Extension's website, it's on, it's on the Purdue Extension website, and then the county one also is on our website as well. They have to email it, you'd like to do that too?
I've seen some of the STEM equipment in there, it's exciting. Did you both elementary schools get to come down and?
Yes. Jeff Craig is doing the walking field trips. I've contacted both principals and I'm working with Ms. Kits to get the kiddos to see this. We're talking about maybe transporting some of the equipment, but because some of it's a little fragile, we're, we're limited, but that's okay, because the three D printers are a little advanced for the younger grades anyway, so we wouldn't be using those.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Kathy Stolson from the health department. I emailed you guys her request on a salary change for the registrar position.
And the registrar position is paid out of a Health First Fund. It's a state-funded grant from Indiana Department of Health. And it's becoming apparent that this position is gonna be a little bit more involved than it was last year. The core services that we provide, we have to provide to get this funding is quite a long lengthy list. We need this person to be an assistant to all the other departments in our department to help them but bring on their new programs and services that they're providing, that we're gonna be providing. Also, this registrar position has taken on the emergency preparedness position, and she's probably already spent about twenty, twenty-four hours in training. So that's the reason that we're asking for the increase, rather than to hire another person. We're looking at maybe a four thousand dollar increase from thirty-six to forty thousand dollars. And she, she is just the assistant to all of us, helping us advance our programs. And we've had a lot of changes in our department lately. We've had some shifting going on, so that's another reason for the job description to change a little bit, kind of leaning on her a little bit more.
Some, some of those additional responsibilities come from Health First themselves?
The programs, all these programs, yeah. They are requiring us even this year, they've added our responsibilities to do data tracking. It's, we have to do that either on a daily basis, a weekly basis, or a monthly basis. And it's, it's quite a spreadsheet to do the tracking for all the services that we do. And that's a requirement to, to accept this funding.
Right, and I was actually gonna ask Garrett about that. With this, you know, a lot of times, if we have something, let's say coming out of the general fund, we advertise for additional appropriations, but with this being through Health First Indiana, I believe that's what it's called, right?
Health First Indiana.
Health First Indiana. So if they're working with them directly, what, would we need to still advertise for something like that, or does that just something that they would take care of after, if we, if we were to?
No, we shouldn't have to. If it's coming directly from there and it's not getting mixed in with the general fund dollars, it's just a separate, because I think you keep that segregated, you know.
It's a completely different fund. It's an eleven sixty-one, it's not anything.
And I've already submitted this to the state, just to get their approval for it, so I have documentation that they have it, they haven't approved it, they're waiting on your response, and I have the Indiana code showing what it is, that we are in compliance.
And is this gonna be grant funded in the future?
As long as that grant's available, this will be grant funded.
This was approved by the health board, is well correct, the?
On February the twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, February the seventh.
I'm making a motion to approve the change in the, change in the salary for the current physician for taking on more tasks from Indiana first.
I'm sorry, can I?
Any other questions?
Okay, I got a motion for Kim and a second by Patty to approve the registrar salary increase to forty thousand dollars. And this is, as I mentioned, funded through Health First Indiana. Is there any questions?
Just one discussion. Garrett, I know as a representative, is this one of those services that the state Senate Bill One would look at to cut? That we would, that counties would then in turn have to, if it passes, that we would have to fund this?
I don't think this would be that part of my, Senate Bill One addresses property taxes specifically, and I think this would be more coming from the budget bill than the budget funded to state. I don't think this would be impacted by Senate Bill One.
The only question is all those in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And next is Sheriff Morton. And I believe I also mentioned you guys this, had a sheriff's deputy that took an instructor development training course at the end of twenty twenty-four, so after the budget and salary limits and everything. And according to the pay matrix, and that qualifies him for a fifteen hundred dollar increase. This would be general fund money. Sheriff's here, if anybody has any questions, but.
Yeah, just an oversight when we did the budget, because about the time he was doing the budget submit salaries is when he was actually in training getting that. Then we submit the salaries, and then after January first hits, he came to us and he's like, didn't I get the extra fifteen hundred for instructor development? And he should have. So it was an oversight on that, so we turned in salaries. So I'm just here asking for fifteen.
Yeah, I've got the request here for Brian, and this is the pay matrix of twenty twenty-four, list down here of the different options, not options, but training and things they do.
It's been that way for the last couple of years. Like I said, it's just an oversight of his particular line item for the salary that we forgot about him actually graduating from that school.
Motion Scott, second. Oh, I'll second. Is there any questions?
Yeah, with the budget, which.
I believe it's deputy two. Sorry, is that correct?
I think he's five.
I don't know, because when you get those sheets, I go by names.
I know who it is, I just want to put his name.
It is deputy two, my bad.
Deputy two.
Yeah.
I didn't want to get into names, but.
I just wanted to make it more.
Dale knows who's chief, you know, has the email and knows who it is, so.
So deputy two, we go from.
What, what angle salary? Fifty-six, sixteen, or fifty-seven, sixteen, is that right?
Basically ends up being just a few cents extra per hour on his hourly rate.
The fifty-six, sixteen is his actual salary now.
It's fifteen hundred for the year. That's what it's.
Dale, I had the numbers all figured out there a couple of weeks ago.
Fifteen hundred for the year.
Fifteen hundred, it's fifteen hundred for the year, yes. Motion from Scott, I second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we can jump to the, we can do much, I think, I mean, we just, general discussion, I think, and.
I think so. I don't, I don't know who asked to put that on there.
The commissioners were asking about, they were asking about access to it, correct?
They decided Monday which one that we're gonna do through the state. We're gonna try the free one at first, and if that one doesn't go out or go well, then we're gonna bump up to.
And that one has, it was like a hundred pages and it had ten users, so there'd be ten people either.
When can our current website be updated? Certain sections on it are, certain sections aren't, so I don't know who has access to update.
I don't have access. I don't know why. I've never had access since I became auditor, so.
After the commissioners voted on this Monday night, did they say when it would start or?
It's not gonna start until April. Which is just around the corner.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we are way behind on all of our, there's minutes, all those special meetings aren't out there from September. The commissioners aren't out there. I know people are saying stuff about it.
All the minutes are on gateway.
We should, hopefully we get this going in April.
This is for the public, the public.
Public can get on that gateway as well.
Have we informed them that they can do that? We told the public they can get on gateway.
Yes. I mean, I know that people get on there all the time because they can get on there and just go.
I'm a fighting palate, so.
Yeah, I mean, Indiana Gateway's got all kinds of information, budgets, and I mean, it's.
I mean, if you've dealt with budgets as a councilor, you should know.
Yeah, it's.
But I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, it's, that's.
I don't know that the general public could work their way around it.
I mean, it's difficult.
That's what I'm gonna say. Somebody that's not involved in county government or anything like that, it, it is.
Yeah, somebody that has access to it now, they can at least update the stuff, because when you go.
Well, I mean, I think the plan, the plan to update will be with this new, with the, with the new program that the commissioners approved on the line. It sounds like in April it'll be ready for us to.
The HR could, and he was putting all my stuff on there. He put everything on there until the end of the year.
There was, just on this topic, there was a bulletin put out, and I think it was the AIC, that anything on Facebook, that counties are having their recorded meetings on Facebook, all of that goes away as of like May tenth. And they're recommending that you go out and you copy it for historic, for historical, and the best site to go to is YouTube. We need to make sure that all of our, all of our meetings are copied before this thing goes, so we don't have any record of any meetings.
For all the live.
Right.
You need to go with something besides Facebook period, in my opinion.
They're recommending, state's recommending YouTube.
Right, there's a lot of counties that do use YouTube.
I, all I'm saying is, I'd like to be assured that, because that's an audit, we gotta be able to document our historical meetings and minutes. So this has to be, I, I know it's like early part of May, so we need to go out and make sure that all of that's done, and that we are confident that we, we've collected that information before this thing goes south.
Well, it's the tenth.
The May.
And how, and who do we, who do we put in charge of that to do that? I mean, which, who's handling that? Because I think that's part of our problem, is we're not, you know, communicating that with the, with the courthouse. We're having the meeting, but then we're not communicating that with people in the courthouse.
Good point, but on, on meeting minutes, that's the auditor's responsibility as the clerk and, or as, yeah, the clerk and recorder for.
Right, right. But there's certain people that have access to it now, but they wouldn't be able to necessarily do something, and that's what I was told, they couldn't do something for me. Like the treasurer, the clerk, the. They have access to our county website or Facebook? County website. And I can't do, I have access to the Facebook. I do too. But I can't get onto the, and I've even contacted Brock and, like I said, Pete was doing it for me. It's not that I don't want to. I would love to be able to do it, and that way everybody knows and people will.
Well, you know, hopefully here in April, this is set up, we'll be able to take it out, we'll get everything there.
Yeah, he was, and I can't even. An asset. Yeah.
Okay.
His login is on his old computer, so. I'll be the first one to admit, I didn't even have to do. And now, now the body, that's not the real happening, you know.
Okay, so there, there is a plan for the county website then, so that's the thing, and hopefully that'll all get updated. And like I said, I think we have ten users that can get on there.
That's the basement, that's the free one.
Basement, yeah, they said if we needed to.
It went up to twenty-five.
That one comes with a fee, but we'll see how the basement does.
So as far as the Facebook, you know, anybody that, any of us that have, have access to the Facebook webpage, we can transfer those videos over to YouTube.
I think YouTube site, if you go out to YouTube, you'll see that it's the county that's, it's basically a county website that you go underneath when you put it in, so. You can go back and look at their bulletin, what their recommendations are, but I'm guessing they're, they're saying follow the YouTube rules that are out there, but you have to list it as being Switzerland County. You click on it and say council or commissioner, and it would, it would put it in date order. I simply wanna make sure that at our April meeting, we're sure that this is getting done.
That they're not lost.
That they're not lost. So I would ask that we put that on the old business and get an update on it.
That's maybe something that Marty might be able to help us with.
I mean, the meetings are titled now with the commissioner, council, so you think that if they, we go to a council meeting and go to YouTube, it'll automatically? I haven't, I haven't met. I've never done anything on YouTube either, so.
We can make channels. YouTube account. Switzerland County Government, you can organize, you can make like a playlist, you can put council as a playlist, all of our stuff.
We should get you to charge.
But you can have basically a council file, a commissioner's file, all under one account.
It does a custody thing, does it? YouTube?
But if Facebook isn't running, it's still on video.
Oh, yeah, we definitely.
January first, they changed all of our, every government, public meeting has to be livestreamed and saved.
That's the trick.
Has to be something in Facebook if they're gonna save the video.
And that's why I made that, we all have the test day.
Okay, well, I'll reach out to the commissioners and, you know, Marty possibly to see what our options are, see what best way is to play. Okay, and we also on the agenda had a sound system. I think that was directed towards the courthouse meeting room, but we maybe can evaluate how these meetings go along and see if we need to make any improvements. Either microphones or sound.
Haven't anybody complained since they've been here. Not, yeah.
Something to, something to keep an eye on. Jump to the tourism letter, Garrett, that you put together. So this, this, they put that together.
Yeah, tourism.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
The only caution I'll, I'll say is that, you know, it's fine, this accomplishes what we wanna do, but we're really late in the game for raising the innkeeper's tax. It's a legislative fix, and so all our bills had to be done in January. I'm talking with Senator Maxwell, because the current master bill that has all the innkeeper's taxes in it is over in the Senate, and so we'll see, but I wouldn't get our hopes up this year about an innkeeper's tax given how late this is coming.
It might be a twenty twenty-six.
It might, it might have to wait, yes. I, I would count on it waiting and be pleasantly surprised if something happens, because of how late in the game we are. Generally, they want testimony, they want all this stuff squared away once again.
So this was already voted on, so did you just see my signature on this, I guess?
It was already voted on, yeah.
And that's just our, from, from blessing that we gave.
So they can.
I think so, it's start the process, yes.
That would give them time. I mean, I know we had tourism Mark, I think is his name, that came to us, and I know it was brought up at council, that did campsites count? Did campsites not count? It was, no, they don't. And it was yes, they do, and then it was yes, they do. So maybe tourism should take the time, if, if it's not approved this year, to go and ask, have a, have a public meeting with all of the, the campsites, with all of the Airbnbs. And get this thing settled, so when it comes to us in twenty twenty-six, everybody's up for it.
Because I've had people from the Airbnb that reached out to me, and they're concerned, because maybe in an Airbnb, they already are not making a lot of money. You know, it's kind of very, you know, fluctuates the business to us, so, you know, they're concerned about it, so, you know, it's something that we really, we really, if, if this goes forward, needs to be looked at, you know, and, and turned over to the public and have their opinions.
I bet some contact may not have been aware they were supposed to be charged.
Okay. All the letters signed, so that. Okay, so now we'll jump back into old business for the salaries. I'll kind of turn this over to Garrett.
I'm, I'm just trying to piece this all together. I'm new here to try to piece where we're at and where we go forward. I'm a solutions guy, so I'm really trying to focus on where we're gonna go from here. My understanding from discussions and then looking through some things here, that there was, on the January twenty-seventh meeting, a motion made. I had my staff pull that motion exactly. The motion was to make full-time employees hourly with the exception of elected officials and probation officers, raise the annual salary of the clerk's deputy, auditor deputy one, auditor deputy two, treasurer deputy, reporter deputy, assessor deputy, blank clerk. My staff just couldn't hear that. Election deputy, administrator in the prosecutor's office, prosecutor's office manager, victim assistant in the prosecutor's office, extension office manager, court reporter in the judge's office, and payroll clerk in the audit's office, two forty-three thousand, I sixty-three. victim assistant in the prosecutor's office, extension office manager, court reporter in the judge's office, and payroll clerk in the office office, two forty-three thousand, I sixty-three, which would be an hourly rate of twenty-one dollars thirteen cents. Reassessment deputy would go to forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, which would be an hour of the rate of twenty dollars sixty-five cents out of the reassessment budget, and the jury administrator in the judge's office hour would go to fifty thousand eight hundred and eighty-four, which is an hour to wait of twenty-four dollars forty-six cents. But that would be helpful for us all to hear verbatim what the motion was at that time. Um, I think at this, at this juncture moving forward, the biggest question, it was answered here, but I do want to confirm as I am preparing the new, uh, ordinance, because the one that was presented to me, I want to clean up a little bit. Principally, the confusing part about the ordinance as it's drafted now is that it has both a pay-per-check uh, line and an hourly rate. If our intention is to move this to an hourly, I believe we do not need a pay-per-check, and I think we need to clarify with some additional language that just says this is hourly, clean some of that up. So that's my intention moving forward. I want to make sure that that's the intention, and that's what, why I have my staff pull that specific um, motion. So that's one thing I want to address today, is make sure everyone's comfortable, and that's the directive that I have to prepare the ordinance moving forward, and we'll have that ready for your review next week, and then to be able to vote on at the next meeting. Does that make sense moving forward?
That, that blank clerk was ISAS, which is under the clerk. That's what that was.
And then the, the other problem with this is just addressing some of these folks that were voted to move, we actually cannot move, and we're not moving. And so we need to clean that up tonight with specifically who's going to be.
Yeah.
If, if this is still the direction, we need to clean up, that's the direction. So, um, the second problem of, that's kind of in, I've made, been aware of to, for discussion is the issue of when this is to take effect. We can make it take effect whenever we want to, so we have that, that power. Generally, that is done after the ordinance is drafted, and it's just kind of retroactively applied. So I think here we have the issue of, uh, the vote took place, and then I think it was, uh, raised. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
So again, being a solutions guy, the question we have is, um, did you intend for it to take effect at that time? Because nobody mentioned, it's just, it would appear that you intended for it to take effect if this was the only motion, um, at that time, but no, it wasn't spec, specific. So I'd like to clear up for the language. Do you intend for it to take effect retroactively? Or do you intend for it to take effect upon the passage of the ordinance? So if you intend for it to take effect upon the passage of the ordinance, we're going to have an issue with the last couple of months of pay. Uh, the issue of them being paid, we will have to work out, I mean, it's done, so again, solutions moving forward, we just have to work out with the State Board of Accounts how to handle it. And, uh, I think they've already been notified and discussed with, so I think it's not going to be a problem working with them. Generally, the more upfront you are with something like this, the better. I think that we'll, they'll see that, that we've been fairly upfront. I'm not too concerned about getting dinged by any, um, penalties just because of how up not everyone's been. I think there was some genuine confusion given the, the gap in attorneys. Does that make sense of the discussion of where we are right now and the decision points that I want to see discussed today? So the decision points moving forward are things that you need to direct me to go forward with.
Yeah, I, I know that you weren't on the email that we received, all of us here and, and the commissioners this morning from SBOA. So I, I, I believe I copied you on that.
Yeah, I was looking over here at it when I got stationed here, so.
So they were, their response at eight twenty-nine this morning was, the new pay would only go in effect after the salary ordinance is amended. SBOA was under the understanding that council had already approved it. So if there is a question with, within the council of it, of it, if, and if it was approved, this may need to be the county attorney to give the opinion. So the question to them was, what is the process? They are clear here that the process is the salary ordinance, and then the pay, and then payroll.
Understood.
Somehow we paid payroll, and I, I understand where you are now.
Yeah.
My understanding, I saw a text from Todd that said, okay, so we're not moving forward until the salary ordinance? I, I didn't respond to that because I agreed with him. That's my understanding. We weren't moving forward. Nothing had been blessed until the salary ordinance was approved, and that we had a chance to hire you. That's what Lance sent to the, uh, State Board of Accounts. He asked if we could retro everything to January twenty-seventh. At no point did he say, can we pay this? So we are in effect, we shouldn't have, I don't know how it got put in there, but I think the rule in the process that SBOA is stating is you have to have an approved salary ordinance.
And that's, and that's where I'm saying we need to come up with a decision tonight if we are going to apply it retroactively, you know, when we move forward, or if we're intending to apply it prospectively.
But we still should have been operating the one that was approved prior.
I think that's.
The state. That's where, that's where.
Just to make it clear, that's what we should have done at that time.
But the raises were approved that night, the raises were approved. The raises were approved that night.
I think there's some discussion, I think we have an argument to be made of saying we intended them to apply that night based off of that, but the ordinance wasn't prepared. Again, this is, this is perspective, so we've already done it. So if we, if I'm of the mind that we need to make this decision on how we fix it, and, and what my directive is on how to prepare this moving forward. I get where you're at in terms of we've done it wrong, but we need to move forward, and I don't know what the will of the board is, and because it sounds like there are some folks that didn't intend for it to apply back then. There are some folks that wanted it to apply starting once the ordinance was, was passed, and there are some folks that intended it for it to apply. Is that fair to say?
And we still have a customer.
How many folks here at council believe that on the twenty-seventh, we were saying, go ahead and start the, the salary increases? That, that, that's an easy way to fix this, is, how many of us believe that on that date, we were instructing the payroll to go ahead and do this from council?
I thought we were putting in what we were, were planning to do, but we weren't doing it until we had a lawyer that could overlook it.
I agree with you, Kim. That's what was, that's the way I took it.
I mean, and I wasn't sure when it was going to start. What do you say?
I wouldn't either, because it was kind of left.
There's five right there. There are not.
But if they've been receiving this raise.
They've been receiving it because we, you guys voted on it on the twenty-seventh. The comment was made to make it retroactive to the twenty-seventh, so why would we do an ordinance a month now and then back pay people?
Okay, so now you have the issue of, if we go ahead and say it's okay, Garrett, if we say it's okay tonight, and the salary ordinance doesn't get the final approval on the vote tonight, then we still have to go back and get the money back.
But you've already voted on the salary increase.
We have not seen the salary ordinance that you are, you were talking about in your opening comments.
Yeah.
You are fixing it.
Yeah.
Therefore, the salary ordinance, according to what the State Board of Accounts, you have to have a salary ordinance, you apply the wages that are agreed to, and then you move it to payroll. If we don't agree that we want to move the salary ordinance on the final vote tonight, that we agree with what you're doing and say, if the, if the, if a motion's made, nope, we don't want to do this, go back to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, we still have to go back and get all the increases.
We could. So this is where I would say that if you want to, here's, here's my proposed solution depending on what happens. So it's for me to contact State Board of Accounts and explain this as the attorney and say, this is what's happened. They intend to, for it to apply retroactively. Do you want us to, for the next month, go back and, and retro and apply the previous salary, or do you want us to just maintain it as is? You're the police agency here. I need your direction because of the change that's already occurred. So we kind of have to fall on the sword in a sense of say, this is what's happening. What do you want as the, as the regulating agent?
And I, I believe the State Board of Accounts is pretty open now that they understand we didn't approve this by their email.
That's why I would ask them specifically.
I don't, I don't believe that. I, we've been very open with them. We had a conference call with them. Um, they're the ones that recommended to retroactive the twenty-seventh.
They said the appropriations can be done whenever. Once you vote on something, the appropriations don't have to be done before that's approved.
But Lance, you're going off the, you're going off the belief, you're going off the belief that
They said that.
this, this council was under the understanding, which four of them just said, they didn't believe we were, we were saying, start this now. That's you saying that, not, not, I mean, we just.
So the raises were approved that night.
They were, but nobody, we, but nobody said that we wanted to start it right then. That's where Kim is. I, I agree with him. Todd just said he didn't understand it.
They were approved, but I thought we were holding off to have discussion once we had an attorney. We approved the two changes we want to make. But we have no attorney to bless it or say we're doing the right thing.
Talked about being retroactive for the twenty.
We sure did. Once, once the approval of this salary ordinance.
The ends to the, 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 the means to the end, the end's still the same.
Yeah.
We're still, we're still, you know, we're still telling the people. There still are a few on here that we had, that we had as hourly, that have, we have been changed to salary now, right, and prosecutors.
Yeah, so judicial, yeah, State Board of Accounts made that clear. There's five positions. In the sixteen that were in the original motion, five of those shouldn't have been. The State Board of Accounts made that clear. Their pay never changed.
Their pay never changed.
Um, so no, at this point, no one owes anyone any money. It's just a matter of getting it correct on salary ordinance, the wording that is Garrett alluded to, hourly and salary. And that, to me, I wanted to speak, I mean, I only wanted to make the motion, at least what my intent was. The first part of the year, people weren't being, not, there was a few, there were some people that weren't being paid correctly to the salary ordinance. We had, we were, there's some misunderstanding about salary versus hourly, and it really wasn't spelled out crystal clear on here, so I called the emergency meeting because I didn't want this to go on very long. My intent was to get these raises, or get these, uh, sixteen positions changed so that from there forward, they're paid correctly. What I was waiting on was the verbiage to explain that. So when they do an audit, that's the intent. That's what we did. It was the, the twenty-seventh was the start of a pay period. So everyone's getting paid correctly. No one owes anybody any more money because employees had to pay back already. So we're getting that fixed immediately. That's why I called the special meeting.
Okay, but that, I mean, I know we voted on this, but that was your opinion, and it was a six to one vote, but it was your opinion that they weren't being paid correctly. The past council in the budget from the beginning of the year through the salary ordinance that was blessed in December, did the best that they could to hit up, make sure that we were still on our advertised budget. You opened it up off of your opinion that people weren't being paid correctly. I think some people thought we didn't realize there was a thousand dollars added to it. I don't think it was, in my, my, my opinion, I know there's been this conversation, but I don't think that the three new council members had a good grasp of this thing because we held this meeting the very, within a special meeting before the council meeting. So I don't think time was given to them to understand it. The appropriation, and, and I had a council member say, I don't, in my, my entire time serving the public, I don't know that any council has ever come in and changed the salary ordinance from the previous council. That's a, that's a, that's a good first. And now, on Monday night at the commissioners' meeting, we hear that the judge and the prosecutor don't even want these raises. Well, when did they come to you and tell you they did want them? And then, and then looking at that, when did the assessor, since January, when is the assessor, the auditor, the clerk, the treasurer, or the recorder come to us and say from their departments that they want this raise? We're making this decision. That's not how it's supposed to be done. You voted it, but to the public, we're, we're making decisions for all this. And finally, of the SBOA, they want to know, are we, where's the general fund? I haven't heard any of us say, we've gone back to the general fund to ensure that we can cover this without going over the advertised. And tonight, you've, you've got an additional fifteen hundred from the sheriff. I don't know what the total new salary increases are because you're removing what you voted for, because the judge and the prosecutor removed their people, and then you're going to reinstate the supplemental pay. How much do we have in the general fund, guys? I mean, have we talked about, do we even have this funds? Who shared that with us? And I, I, I'm not throwing you ca, I'm not casting stones. I voted no to this. I think it's ridiculous to go and open this up after a council has come together all year to set the budget for, for this council, just just come in and say, well, in our opinion, it was all done wrong. If you want to deal with that, you deal with it in Jan, in July, when the new twenty twenty-six budget comes in, so that everybody is informed. This, this thing is, is, is out of control, in my opinion. But hey, and then we have the issue of the commissioners, not knowing that the salary increases were a part of their claims. How do we explain that? There's our communication breakdown. And that's on us because we're sitting here tonight as Garrett's asking, what was your intent? And we just took a, hey, what was your intent? And we can't explain that to ourselves. Leave this thing alone, go back to twenty twenty-four and move forward.
My intent, my intent was for it to be retroactively placed. I was unsure whether we achieved that or could achieve that in that meeting. I talked to Lance at the meeting, and he had talked to someone at State Board of Accounts and said that we could that that was going to be done. But like I said, I was unsure on that, but as far as Garrett's.
Too new to make any.
Garrett's question, my intent was for this to be retroactive.
And, and I didn't want to open up a discussion necessarily of intent. What I was actually putting that up for is tonight's meeting should be focused on what do we want to do? So my question really is not necessarily, I think that was, why, why this, tonight is important to direct me what to do is because there is some ambiguity there. I need to know when this is supposed to take effect, and I need to know who is specifically changed. I need to know the specific, who's hourly and who's salary. And I will change that.
And who are we taking off?
Yeah.
You said there are some being taken off.
Because we also, because that's also.
I've got the sixteen that was originally in the motion, you got a new list. And I've got the five highlighted in red, but then they're all the judicial points. So you got the, you got the administrator.
We didn't know that they could not be changed until after the fact.
So judicial court reporter?
Court reporter.
Is now salary.
Yes.
Okay.
Just the number of salary.
Yes.
Okay. Jury admin?
Yes.
Okay. Who else?
The administrator. Administrator.
Prosecutor administrator, okay.
And the office manager.
You write in there, top of command of prosecutor.
And the fourth D.
And the victim assistant, brother. For those five, the judicial, so you're left with eleven.
And then the other question that I had was, the, the prosecutor had willingly put that five thousand stipend back into the budget in order to make the increases for jailers and, the jailers and something else.
No, the people in his office.
It was the people in his office.
The people that reported to him.
Okay.
Not, it didn't have anything to do with the jailers.
And then Judge Coy, then at that meeting that he came to, that he wanted his stipend back.
He never gave his up, though, his was taken.
But doesn't there have to be a reason for us to pay a stipend because some things, it can't be done just because like Judge Mitchell was covered Switzerland and Ohio camp.
That's part of what the. His documents that he gave out that night explained.
No, his doc, he did, he did send a letter. So that you all know, I sent the letter to, uh, the DLGF yesterday, and I'm waiting on a response. The letter that, that Greg Coy sent to us, he claimed that he deserves it because the past judge was receiving it, and that other county judges around Switzerland County were receiving it. DLGS said, those are not reasons for supplemental pay. I've asked them to clarify what are reasons for supplemental pay? Now, it doesn't mean, according to them, if you, we voted, you voted six to one again, that you wanted to give supplemental pay. So you can give it, but when the SBOA, who's never checked it themselves, and I made that point, uh, we've never had put a reason as to what we're doing. I want it done right, but can you explain to us what supplemental pay is? And then there's a part in there that says you can't harm the judge or whoever you give it to. And they're clarifying what that means by harm. So I can tell you that a past judge is, or other judges around surrounding counties does not qualify, according to DLGF, for supplemental pay. There's, there's a list of things, and they're supposed to supply that, and when I get it, I will pass it on to you folks.
But the new ordinance has the five thousand back in.
Yeah, we've got, we've got the five thousand back in, yeah.
So that's a total of ten thousand that we made in budget cuts, coming out, that is now back in. Again, how much is in the general fund to cover the total increases? And now we're sitting here tonight thinking that what we passed is not passed really because the judge and the prosecutor have pulled their people out. So can we get a, a document that's finalized, that we really can all look at here?
The, the total cost would be thirty, uh, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three.
Thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three.
Yeah.
Plus the fifteen hundred that we just did tonight, so now you're at thirty-six.
Yes.
Plus the reinstatement of the ten, now you're at forty-six, though.
Already reinstated.
I know, but that was a budget cut, too. So that means your, your, your advertised budget went down because you took it off of those cuts, and you've now applied it back into the general fund. So you got to add that.
No, we don't have.
Okay.
Thirty-six, nine, thirty-three.
What's the best way to go through and identify who's hourly and hourly and who's salary? Um, I mean, we want to walk through the ordinance and identify them? I mean, obviously, you got your elected officials already in their positions. What's the best way to do that?
What you're saying is just take, they shouldn't have per check. It shouldn't even be on there. It should just be.
The more information that's on this ordinance, the more information the State Board of Accounts is going to come in and look at.
Right.
They're going to pull this, and they're going to want a voucher and everything, and they're going to want to know, this is what she made a week, this is what her annual was, this is what her rate is.
And the biggest thing.
They told us that.
If we have per check there, that's going to be, they're going to say, well, why doesn't the check say that then?
Exactly.
So that's the biggest thing.
And that's where I'm saying, if we take off that per check column, which it shouldn't be on there theoretically. It should just be you, late and hour.
Per check doesn't make any sense.
No.
Out there, I mean, you don't know what your per check.
We'll call them the salary ordinance when everybody's not salaried, too, it's confusing, but that's how it's called.
And I just want to clarify, anybody that does not have an hourly mark, you intend them to make the yearly salary. That is right there.
If this is correct.
Yeah, I'm pointing at that one. I'm pointing at that one.
Yeah, this is my, one of my changes on it. Theoretically, if they don't have an hourly rate in the hourly column, it should just be you.
And, yeah, those five people that we, you just marched, those are the ones that have an hourly that shouldn't. So if you take those five out, in my opinion, the rest are correct.
I, I'm not into this sort of opinion. I want, I want a correct statement given to all of us. And I want to know, does our general fund cover all these increases? I, that is, as a fiduciary, individual fiduciary for the council, that all of us are, I want to know, does our general fund cover this? I have yet to hear anybody say they've looked.
Yeah, what's in our general fund then?
Do we have a balance of the general fund at this time?
I can't get my laptop in the month, so my computer must be down again.
I mean, if we don't have thirty thousand, we're in bad shape.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, it fluctuates throughout the year as, as the, you know, property taxes and things come in. It obviously goes up and down like anything else, but I don't have any fear at all that we can't cover thirty-five thousand dollars.
You can appropriate for it.
We've already advertised for.
Right, but you can appropriate to the, to the salary, like, there could be no appropriations for salary. Page five, what I handed out to you, last sentence, verse, the salary ordinance is a separate and distinct ordinance, and should in no way be combined with the ordinance for appropriations. It has to be there.
Yeah, they should, those are the ones that should be salary, if I got it right. One, two, three, four.
The one else should be south, should be hourly.
No.
You have some.
The elected officials are salaries. They don't, they don't have a rating.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty simple.
Tim, can you, can you get your stuff, and you scan that to me in my email? Because I don't know if I have an updated thing that you guys were looking at.
You mean that, the updated one?
Yeah. I have the one that you sent in the email, is that one?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you have an updated?
Lisa gave me a book, but I want to make sure I'm looking at the latest and greatest.
No.
Okay.
That has.
This is what was. This is what.
I would like it. Okay.
The judge just had the five thousand dollars. And the prosecutor, the judge's.
Um, that's probably.
Which, I don't know that many about that. I don't know if they did that over the whole year, two dollars and forty cents, even. Yeah, we talked about that, the judge's supplemental was, it actually had an hourly rate on it, is that just because there's a little bit goes into it?
It just, it automatically did that.
Okay.
We don't pay any of the judge. That money goes directly to the state. No, we don't pay the five thousand to him, it goes to the state, and they just.
So that all, all, all-time hourly employees, with the exception.
Prosecutor does, but we pay them the.
And elected officers.
Yeah, yeah, and obviously, like.
I mean, that's, so.
That's the intention.
Yes.
So any part-time, obviously, they're already, or you want them to just have a flat rate, just trying to understand.
The, the part-time is on here, Gail, like, let's say the park board, how are those paid hourly?
They're paid hourly. They, they're paid hourly, because most of those are just summer help.
Basically, everybody is hourly, with the exception of.
Elected officials and.
Elected judicial, and then prosecutor's office, better say?
Um, and probation officers.
Yeah, they can be under his.
They're, yeah, the judicial side.
And, and the chief deputy also, for share of correcting salary.
Yeah.
Curry, chief, chief curry, chief deputy, chief.
Yeah, it shows a salary. He doesn't have an hourly on it.
Being that we took a vote with all the prosecutor and the judge's office in there, and then we approved that, and now we find out that the judge and the prosecutors don't want it, is the vote that we originally did even sound anymore?
Well, I'm troubled by the, if you're going to make a vote, and you're not going to have everything in that vote done, that was what I talked to you about, that's, when you make the vote, then you're going to live by half of it, which you've lived by all of it. But again, I'm here to try to clean this up. So today, I wanted to stay focused on, what are we going to do? I want a directive as clear as possible to me, when this is supposed to take effect, who, which I think, you know, just put that in the motion, the who, and then, um, if you decide not to, then we would just rescind the old motion in its entirety. But that's, that's just what I want directive tonight, to prepare it, send it to you next week, and have it for the next meeting. Does that make sense? And then, what I will do in the meantime, depending on the directive tonight, is I'll contact State Board of Accounts from the attorney's perspective and say, this is what we're doing, this is what's, what's going to happen in the future. I just want to let you know, we've been as upfront as possible. Are you okay with it staying as is, or do you want us to take a remedial measure right now for the next month? Before it's officially signed? Or not, if it's not, if so not.
So I guess the question is, if we, if the motion, if the motion's made to just stop and go back to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, you don't have to call the SBOA, and we don't get told, they don't, explain to them that, hey, we, we went out of the process, we're into the process, we're going to send new, new records to you as to what we're really looking at. We just move forward and we deal with this in twenty twenty-six.
Not necessarily, because the problem I would have then is we would have to, then, then it creates a problem that if we've changed these salaries, that it, that creates almost, because now we've got to explain why we paid them more for those first months.
We didn't know that we were paying.
Well, then, then we're going to have to adjust pay in the future, does that make sense? So if we paid them more then, and we've made the motion to go back to the old, then we're going to have to adjust that somewhere in the future.
See, that's a difference. Forty-five, sixty, that's in the new one.
And that still could happen, people say, we don't want to move forward.
Wouldn't, in terms of the folks here? Yeah, if, if they, yeah, if it's not a retroactive decision, then we'd also need to account for that moving forward.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to see us clean this up with the language that you're mentioning, you know, taking out the paper check column, obviously identifying the hourly people, making it retroactive, the night we voted on it. Nobody owes anybody any money, and we're off and running. That's, I think, the cleanest way to do it. That's what I. You know, we had employees paying money back, first part of the year, and that's just, demands is terrible situations.
What, I mean, we, why do we have people paying money back at the beginning of the year?
I think, because there was, um, there was confusion on people hourly versus salary. There were some people being paid salary.
Has that all been fixed?
Yes.
And so the two, the two days out of twenty twenty-four that your, your office paid twenty twenty-five salaries, has that been fixed?
I talked to State Board of Accounts about that, and they.
They what?
Say yes or no, on either way.
How can we be, I mean, you got to, you're saying that the State Board of Accounts said we were fined for those two days to pay twenty twenty-five?
They didn't say that, but it, they're saying we need to figure out exactly how much, about twenty dollars that people repay.
Okay, so did we get that money back?
I can get it back quickly, yeah.
But isn't that what the commissioners at the beginning of the, they did not, the first two salaries, so.
Beginning of the year, the first meeting.
They, they did not approve payroll claims, the first two payroll claims. I believe that the commissioner said, we're not, we're not agreeing with this until you fix that. So has that been balanced out for the county?
They paid that, they've approved those claims. They said that contingent on, because that was the day that, uh, Jamie asked me about.
Yes, they approved those on that meeting.
So, but had, you're saying it hasn't been fixed, we haven't gone back and gotten the money?
I have got the eight hours that everyone owed, and now you're talking about two other days. No, I have not gotten that.
Okay, so that would be.
The twenty twenty-four.
So I'm guessing that's what you were asking for, is to get the balance.
No, nothing, it was more about the eight hours that was overpaid. That meeting. That was the meeting that one commissioner decided to talk about time sheets and payroll, and I didn't, just wasn't prepared for that.
But the last two days of twenty-four were paid in twenty twenty-five, is what you're asking about.
Yes.
No, it was. It wasn't the question, it was. I have the voucher sheets to show that it was.
You're talking that that was in.
Because they were paid for eighty hours, and they should have only been.
So we should be getting that money back? That, that balances your register.
For the twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Right.
That mistake was made because it had always been salary.
Yes. Wasn't nothing intentional that I did, or anything that is being. Yeah.
I mean, for tonight's purposes, I mean, we, we voted for the two supplemental pays, those are included, we voted for the raises, those are. Like I said before, I'd like to get this cleaned up with the language and identification of where everybody's position is as far as hourly and elected and salary, and retroactive to January twenty-seventh, I mean, we got to give them some direction.
What you do is just, uh, you know, move to have the attorney prepare an ordinance that says, insert motion here. So it's effective as of, um, kind of passage of the ordinance, or upon the motion made January twenty-seventh, retroactive to January twenty-seventh. And then, the other part of the motion would be, you know, we're moving to move all full-time employees except for judicial, prosecutorial, if you want to clarify, make sure it says probation, and elected officials to hourly, and then whatever salary that you want me to put in there for those folks. Uh, that, that helps me, and then I'll, and I'll clean it up and just make sure. Because I think the confusion comes in, when you have that paper check there, I think that confuses folks. So this will, in the future, clean it up, I'm going to add some clarifying language in the beginning, help you make sure this is a little smoother, so. That's the intention, so. If anyone wants to make those sort of motions, that's the, what I'm looking for of a directive. Or in the alternative, if you say, we don't want to do that, then that's also a motion as well. So those, those are the things I'm looking for. Be directed to do.
Well, if, Garett, if we go forward, my vote will stand, but I still know, but, um, if we go forward, and they approve this, I want you to self-report this county for not following the process. Because that's clear what the SBOA said this morning. So just please make sure that you self-report us, that we were outside of the boundary line of not having approved salary ordinance, putting the wages in there, because we're fixing the wages again now, and now, and putting, and paying the increases, that the commissioners were not aware we're in there, that we didn't know we're being paid, and that this council, multiple people said, I wasn't aware we were moving forward. Just, it's, it's just a self-report, so that we don't get hit with a financial report off of the SBOA's next audit this year. Please put that in there.
And, and I think that, and I will, but, and I, and I also think that the actions taken to, to self-report and talk to them has, has put us on their radar, and so I think they will appreciate the steps that we made up to this point.
But when we made them, when we made this vote in Jan, January twenty-seventh, with the knowledge, knowing that we did not have a county attorney, the reason why I think there was some confusion about when this was going to happen is we all decided that it was more of a good faith effort to get those salaries, um, more in line with what they were being paid in twenty twenty-four.
I agree that six of you did decide that, and not all. I, I did not agree to that. So I want to make sure that the vote has said what it is. I did not say that.
With, um. Well, oh, I mean, since we already voted in the, since we already voted in the judge and prosecutor's supplemental pay, we already voted in the raises of those eleven. Um, obviously, we overstepped on the twenty-seventh and included judicial that we shouldn't have. The State Board of Accounts helped us through that again, and they said, uh, the best way to handle that is all the documentation, the back and forth that we had with them. They sent us the, the case file to help explain that. And we can, she said, if it's documented, if they would come and audit and pull a check in this timeframe that we're working in, that would explain that. That would explain why the judicial didn't get the additional raise, and the others did, because of that. So she, this is Stacy Burns, I said, that was State Board of Accounts, so I, I feel if, she, she said she would, they would not take an exception yet, is what the word she used, so. I mean, I know this was done without an attorney, and I felt time was of the essence at the time. So with those things of all that happened, I mean, I, at this point, I'll be ready to make a motion to update the salary ordinance, have our attorney update the salary ordinance, with everyone going to hourly, with the exception, oh, I'm sorry, all the full-time employees going to hourly, with the exception of the elected officials, and the judicial and prosecutor, prosecutors' employees. Also having him modify the ordinance to remove the amount per check column, and just add additional language to, to, uh, separate hourly versus salary.
When would you like that to take effect?
I'd like that to take effect January, this ordinance would take effect January twenty-seventh.
Discussion?
Let me write that down. We got a motion, I made the motion, Scott second, discussion.
Hey, again, nobody here has looked at, we need to confirm, do we have the money in the general fund? You're going, you're going to do this again, go out and look at your general fund, but let's make sure. I know you're saying, in your opinion, your opinion doesn't count, the real dollars.
One point nine million.
One point nine in the general fund?
Yes.
What was advertised?
In the general fund, the appropriations were advertised.
Okay, so you're saying.
What was advertised in the salary? Or are you talking about the budget that I advertised?
Budget.
Overall, everybody's working budgets.
Yep.
I'd have to look and see if I can get on to.
And going back in my notes, when we initially made the changes, it was a difference of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars from that initial meet, when we voted. Now, with tonight, we're talking, it's, with the changes, it makes it thirty-six, nine, thirty-three, including the fifteen hundred dollars for sheriff one. So we're actually eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven.
Did you put the ten thousand that we made, did you make the ten thousand dollars in there, too?
Yes, that's it. That's it. So we're actually eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars better than we were at that initial vote.
Even though we did all these increases, you're saying we're better?
Because it took.
We took five of them out.
Five of them out.
This year.
They aren't getting any increase, right, at all?
Yeah, they're not getting any increase at all.
I wasn't involved in any of this, so I'm just trying to soak it in, that's why I'm sitting here plugging, just to be sure.
The one that wasn't, was the fifteen hundred, we just. The fifteen hundred from the sheriff's. The fifteen hundreds and the sheriff's.
And and it's added into that thirty six nine thirty three.
We're still well under what we what we advertised.
And the original motion was the the ones that we're excluding now, were they getting an increase in the original motion? And that's why it's lower.
The judicial, yes.
Some of them were, some of them were, we had said were hourly when they're not hourly. So there were some differences there too. But I think going and going back to when we went to the twenty one thirteen. My discussion on that is, the original budget was that they were at nineteen ninety eight. And they were saying in twenty twenty four, they were at twenty sixty five. With the forty hours. Over thirty six hours. But if they went to forty, brought their salary to forty two nine sixty three. So now with the the increases we did brings it to forty three. Nine sixty three, and you're saying because of that thousand.
Yes, because with the twenty sixty five rate, that was before the thousand.
But I, for some reason, I thought in the budget meetings at the end of the year, raises were already put in there to get to the twenty sixty five.
They were.
No, the twenty sixty five was before.
Twenty sixty five was what was accrued in the in the initial budget. But that was with raises already, correct?
Twenty sixty five is what they made last year at a thirty six hour rate, like. Oh shit.
But go into a nineteen ninety eight rate per hour working forty hour, no, don't make some more salary.
Because the the hours were extended to forty, but no more money was added, except the thousand dollars. So that's why the rate went down from twenty sixty five to nineteen ninety eight.
That's what I'm saying, but the thousand was added in there to get them to.
Nineteen ninety eight.
Right.
Yeah, they went down, yeah, so I went back to twenty sixty five. Added a thousand, and we went to forty one thirteen. There wasn't added twice, I I went back before the raise.
Those thousand was in there to get them to twenty sixty five, that's where.
No, twenty sixty five was the.
Four percent raise.
Yeah, the four percent raise. That's with the budget.
See, the guys, this is why.
Because I was at the budget meetings, and that's why I'm so confused, because I went, even though I wasn't on council yet, I went to all the budget meetings. And I knew that there was a raise in there. But the raise at four percent, but you're saying because they went to forty hours, it dropped them to nineteen ninety eight an hour versus the twenty sixty five if they were working thirty six hours.
Yes.
And this is why I asked for discussion, look at what we're doing right now, we're going back and looking at the budget of twenty twenty four that was, that was blessed. And we're asking questions and we're looking to vote on this tonight, and I'm watching people say, I'm not sure I think that we all understand this, other than Lance telling us what his opinion is. I think each one of us owes a responsibility, those that were not on council. To go back and seriously look at the budget as to how everything was blessed and ask the appropriate questions. This, right here, is showing the public, we're just voting to vote, we don't have all the information. Kim, you're you're making great questions, but this should have been presented to us at the very first meeting, what the intent was, and all the financials of the past budget. And it was not, and that is why I voted no, so.
That's the key, you voted, this is, she's asking about something we already covered. We did this January twenty seventh and voted on, she's asking the questions about something that was already approved. I don't mind answering them, it doesn't mean I don't know what's going on.
I'm I'm asking, I'm watching her and she's going.
She's asking how we got that, no, we already voted on it now.
Okay, I I that's her question, but you gotta ask her if she understands.
The thing, the thing of it is, is, you know, you had twenty twenty four, you know, February of twenty twenty four. A person making twenty one nineteen an hour, working sixty eight hours for that week, and now we want to pay him nineteen ninety eight and think that they're gonna stick around. If we don't take care of our people, it won't matter. What we budget, because we're not gonna be able to get anybody else to come in.
Man, Carrie, I agree with you, but you have to look at it from council and commissioners' expectations, commissioners made recommendations on the budget as per state rule. We took it up after they they made their recommendations and council actually changed their recommendations. Because we only have so much, so many dollars, it's it's what we collected in in revenue, so the the entire board of council. Set for meeting after meeting, special meeting after special meeting, and presented a fiscal budget to the state of what we really could afford. We all have to keep in mind, we're not a balanced budget, my God, we asked the commissioners to pay six, one point six million dollars for medical health. We asked them to cover the.
Matt, let's stay on salary orders, we gotta.
I am, I'm trying to make sure we're all understanding what this budget is, we don't cover our own budget, guys. And now we're asking, even though council sat down and said, this is the most we can give, now we come in on Jan- on the first week of January and say, that council was wrong. We're just gonna raise the increases anyways, again, you have what you have. And I don't think the council individually, if you guys say that you have, you're comfortable with what you've looked at. And have looked at the past, the past budget, say it, and let's move on.
I'm comfortable with what I had, with what I see here in moving on with paying our employees. A fair wage.
I agree.
And I don't think it's fair for you to expect people to work forty hours a week. At a salary. And then come back and and say, oh, we're giving you a five percent raise, raise, and by the way, now you're making nineteen ninety eight an hour, and we're gonna pat ourselves on the back, no, we're not. That is not an increase.
But that's for forty hours, right?
That's not an increase in their pocket.
That's for forty hours.
Yeah.
And they don't work forty hours.
Right.
I, yeah, right.
You're right, and they don't work forty hours, but when you go from nineteen ninety eight for sixty eight hours.
Let me clarify that, because I don't want to get hit, I'm gonna get hit on social media, I'm sure, somewhere. I understand that the clerk's office puts in forty hours, I understand the treasurer's office works forty hours.
And so does the auditor's office.
Well, we'd have, I'd ask that question.
I guess I wanted to just ask Garrett on this, on the motion, it's on the table, I mean, obviously added the, to remove the column. The amount per check, but as you're going over this. My intent is that you will review the paragraph in the beginning, basically the whole document, because you're looking at me redoing the entire document, I mean, is that?
Yeah.
There's code, okay, so that's all included with.
Retro to the.
And yes, it's it's retro, that was the motion that was made.
Was it?
Yes, going to clean.
I just don't like it on that stuff. One point nine.
One point nine, but you gotta remember that's a more thing, I mean, money's going, coming in and going out constantly.
What was the other figure, did you ever get the other figure for?
The total by unit, which is the whole county, from what we were approved, this is not just in the general, eleven million, little over eleven million, so. That was all, this is the top. That's counting.
If the commissioners come back and want to raise all the highway that they're supposedly gonna look at, what's that gonna do?
That was brought up.
Yeah, what's that gonna do?
You realize that's a different one?
I I don't know where salaries go in that.
You don't know where highway money comes from?
Well, salaries I'm talking about, doesn't doesn't highway include in salaries?
But it does not come in.
No, it is.
That's right.
Eleven seventy six, eleven seventy three. ABH, they get a part of this.
It was the clerk's office, they were, from the clerk's office, that they haven't been getting paid since the twenty seven.
And they all check.
And that's, did the retro. All of this, once we get the wording, we're just asking. If that fits, we should be good with the State Board of Accounts. Is that your understanding?
I think, I think that once we get the ordinance correct, we get it signed, and then I think all the steps that we've taken are gonna be a really good faith effort, as I told you. Generally, what they're gonna look at, when when State Board of Accounts is coming in, is they're looking at, was there. You know, some sort of negligence, or was there some sort of intentional. Misappropriation, misuse, seems to me, coming in here fresh, that there's been a lot of efforts.
Exactly.
To really. I'll be up front with them continuing, so we can just make sure that we're constantly compliant, so.
And the two days that Matt referred to, that was paid. The two days that were from the twenty four that were paid at the twenty five rate, that's a total of thirty dollars and seventy two cents that I will make sure gets into the general fund in the morning. Just to clarify, and I'll send State Board of Accounts that email on that as well, even though I've talked to them before. So, sorry, we had a motion second.
No, I'm not, I got, did I, in my original motion, did I say the sheriff's chief deputy, was he salary correct?
Yes.
Did I say that in the? Okay.
I think you did, because you did.
Yes, you did, you're, you did.
That he is salary.
I can amend the motion if I need to, but if I said it, I see, forget the elected officials, the judicial, employees and prosecuted, prosecuted employees and chief deputy for sheriff.
And everyone will have the opportunity to review this and vote, you know, sign it at the next meeting, so everyone will have that official, you know, to check this work.
Okay, so I made the motions. Scott made the second, is there any other questions? All those in favor?
I want just to stay, just because I don't have any background information, I'm not voting against or for.
Okay, those opposed?
Order two, I'll prepare this, send it to you guys for review by Wednesday, and then by the next meeting, we'll have that document. Actually review and approve or.
Thank you. All the reports, we have.
Fire chief meeting yesterday. New dual-band radios are in, Tom Moore got to his grant. Also, Tom also organized the food boards for school bus transportation training, Saturday, April twelve. Our scene self-reading class, Saturday, May tenth. First, what we believe to be thoroughly checked to our departments at the meeting. And the fire chief boards and fire chiefs are concerned with the budget set of approximately thirty seven year of the year. Twenty point four, they received two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. This year, it looks to be one ninety six eight two. And. I just wanted to throw in there just some context for everybody, the public and all of us. More to the fire department, because I'm on it, I talked to Glenn today. And we roughly, very conservatively, spend sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars per year to stay open. That's, doesn't include truck or equipment or building appreciation or anything. Fuel, electric, insurance. Here, the fire fireware and air pad, but everything else is not included. And. Morefield Fire Department received thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars last year, so that's roughly half of what it takes to keep the department going. I was playing all this together at four o'clock today at full meeting, I got work, and obviously Morefield is the easiest way to get numbers off, but I would assume that the other departments have probably done similar vote. I'm not asking for anything, I just.
Yes.
I wanted everybody to know that, hey. That there's a bit of a shortfall here.
And what did you say that they, the comment was made that they used to get from casino revenue, what was the percentage?
Eight percent of the. What I was sold by the chief.
The thirteen percent reduction, was that the casino money, was that what they reported?
Their their share, what they got.
It's gone down over the years, you're saying?
Yeah, they got two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars even last year. We got that for the last few years. This year, it looks, it looks as if they're gonna get one hundred ninety six thousand eight hundred fifty three dollars.
We are.
Well, there's a percent of the distribution.
They're going off of their first pay, so.
Yeah, that's going off the first, thoroughly, and nobody seemed to be sure how that all works. Like I said, I'm not asking for anything, I'm just.
Um.
Wanted to bring some.
If they, if they would want to put that kind in an email with those details, I don't know, like each. Firehouse would want to do that, or maybe just the fire chiefs and the whole, I think that would be helpful to share, you know, everybody to kind of see the whole picture, if they want to do that.
I'll reach out to the next meeting.
Talking about casino revenue, John Bond did reach out to me and ask, he would like to come to the next meeting and explain the casino revenue to everyone, to everyone, we have new people and.
Right.
Maybe some of the other people too, I don't know, but. I believe so.
And I got a report from.
Okay.
Recycling had a, had a meeting on February nineteenth at for sales, and. Meeting talked about the recycling days and whatnot, most of them are gonna be around April twenty second. Preparations for all those events and everything are underway, invited all of us to come and look at the actual centers, and then the board did actually vote for a new van truck and a. Box truck, because they, they can't cover all the routes with trucks that they have, so board did vote to use funds to find a new box truck and a van truck, to better service. And we have another meeting in nine.
No, no.
Meeting is April.
Oh, I do it, I, if you have any, I know that we didn't have power, we couldn't throw in anything else, but I did want to make one statement about, I passed out this to all of you. The Indiana State Board of Accounts, guys, you all should look at this, go out and sign up for it, also, I know that there's been a lot of chatter out there. I hear about it through my own email account as to office hours and what those things are. Mr. Joyce, who is the state examiner, made it clear, I just, I'm glad you're here, my friend, Mr. Garrett. If you look at the payroll issues on page, page five. The statement says, for both elected officials, employees, payroll should be processed in accordance with the salary and wage ordinance. And the county's written policy of compensation and benefit. The written policy of this county states that all offices are to be open from eight to four thirty P M minus the prosecutor and. The judge, on page six. Mr. Joyce gets specific and says, as of late, we have had a lot of county auditors, commissioners, judges reaching out regarding county policies and handbooks. Which additionally leads to the conversation of time records and payroll claims. So let's be clear, policies and handbooks pursuant to I C code five ten dash six dash one B. The county commissioners have the authority to enact an ordinance establishing vacation, sick leave, paid holidays, and other similar benefits. I C code thirty six dash two dash two dash twenty four gives the commissioners the authority to establish and maintain the court. And the courthouse, or the courthouse and several other public offices. For some county offices, the statute identifies when an office shall be open, an example of this can be found in the auditor statue below. The auditor shall keep the office, auditor's office in a building provided by the county seat, by the county executive, the commissioners. The auditor shall keep the auditor's office open for the business hours during regular business hours on every day of the year, except Sundays and legal holidays. However, the auditor may close the auditor's office on specific days by the county executive according to the custom. Here's what I'll say about our salary ordinance, our salary ordinance in the first page from Mr. Paul Joyce, state examiner, says, you have to follow. In agreement with the salary ordinance, all benefits, all written policy, the written policy of this county is that our offices at the courthouse. Are to be open from eight to four thirty P M, it does not mean that the auditor or the treasurer or the recorder or the assessor or the clerk or the treasurer. Cannot evolve under thirty six hours, those doors have to be open, Garrett, is that the way you understand these policies?
Yeah, generally, when the office, especially if there's a specific I C code on a specific office, the doors have to be open during that time, so.
They have not been.
How do you enforce that?
Now comes the the good part, according to the state examiner, we have to turn them in, and they take the enforcement. Well, all you have to do is keep the business, the office open from eight to four thirty, that's the rule.
What does the state examiner think?
I, you got to talk to him.
Right?
Yeah, I've I've worked with Paul before, when I was. Yeah, I've worked with Paul before, when I was in the attorney general's office. And so I'd be more happy to get some clarity on some of that with you guys as well.
All we have to do is keep the offices open from eight to four thirty, right?
Yeah, generally.
Then you don't have an issue with state examiner. And so, but it does tie to the salary ordinance, that you have to follow all written policies. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's part of, I'm gonna get this all
Is there any amount of money you're not willing to spend in court to force these agents to do this?
This is an I C code from, this is a letter from the state examiner. What are you talking about? They can, they can sue the state examiner if they want to, yeah, not me. And he's sending it to all county elected officials. He's letting us know, this is the rule.
But even if they're working thirty six hours, you can stagger
Yeah, you can stagger. All you have to do is go one person, keep it up, so.
It's up to them. I'm sure what we do to get around that.
That's all I had. Oh, you're gonna cover SBOA?
I was gonna ask Garrett about, I know that was one of the topics that we, that I sent you before, you know, the audit that we received November? The final
So
So I was wondering, I basically want you to review that, and if there's any, you have any recommendations for the council, and also for the individual offices that we can get to them.
Garrett, we did, he's right, we did, we had, we had what was called the final meeting pre, before they sent the final document.
Yeah, you sent me that, so I'll look at that. I've been focused on the salary thing.
Right.
And again, Jefferson was on vacation this week. Session is, got one more month left, so then
I gave him the preliminary reports that they sent in October, I think it was, and then the final report and the, what do they call it, the one that went with the final report, I sent that to him.
So the report, so I talked to them today
Supplemental
because I know we got, commissioners got handed a response back, that's their deal, but I didn't realize that this is still open for us. We just have to make sure that the public has access to the to the actual report, which is like eighty six pages. You've done that, right?
The county has the access to it, yes.
Public does.
The public, yes.
And that, and the reason we didn't address this in January was because all of the council had not received the report. So we said we were gonna, and I explained that to him, we did say that, but we had not formally gone out to the public what the response was of the audit.
And we want to make some changes possibly based on
You need to do that. I just don't want council to get a letter from me.
SBOA.
Yeah, my intent in the email to him, and you guys are welcome to ask for more information or anything, was to review those reports and what's his recommendations that we do to address the internal control. Most of them were internal control
Right.
questions. There's a few others, but that's what I was asking of Garrett, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, I had three things we've already tackled, two of them, so that one might be the other.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get on that. Apologize for what I did for here.
I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. You'll make it?
I'll third it.
Give him a second. All those in favor?
I need you guys to sign up completely
Which is what?
The minutes.